We need to, he says, waiting for the host to start the meeting. I'll start there.
There we go.
Meeting is being recorded.
Am I joining with computer audio?
Yeah.
Yes, but I need to, I think it's this one I have to. No, that one's already.
If you can hear us. Or Sam, can you hear us? All right, got it.
Yep.
Can we hear you? We can.
All right.
You want to turn your camera on Cheryl? The camera on the laptop.
Yeah. All right, it's five oh five and I'll call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order. It's a special meeting this Tuesday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty three at five P M. Council, present tonight, we have Council Lozón, Council Booton, Council Shawn Bell, Council Dearing, Mayor Hemmerich, and joining us online is Counselor Stockwell. The staff joining us tonight, we have City Manager Charlie Castro, Clerk Treasurer Dawes, Chief Police, Chief Fire Department, Deputy Chief Fire Department, and
Brooke Pouliot.
And Brooke, Resource Officer Pouliot. And tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and Council's rules of procedure, which are available online. Welcome everybody who's joining us, and to those of you joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for any technical issues or difficulties, and please remain muted when you're not speaking. The city offers online access as a convenience, and we'll continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. For, for people online in, in the room, please raise your hand and signal if you'd like to be recognized and speak into the microphone. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first, and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. Please state your name for the record, too. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we'll get this sorted. And I want to thank anybody, everyone in advance for participating in a civil way, and welcome Counselor Wazza. With that, that takes us to the second item on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda.
None from me, Mayor.
Manager, any for council? All right, no adjustments to the agenda. Are there items for visitors and communication?
I'm Jesse Rosado from Merchant Street, and I just wanted to come and talk to you guys real quick about the bus situation again. And just to remind folks that we're still exactly where we were eleven months ago, and we haven't made any progress. And I want to take a, a moment to talk about this today, most importantly, because it's so germane to what we're about to cover here down the road. You know, the fact is, is that I know the bus system well. I used to take the bus all the time, and I'm going to tell you guys a couple of stories to humanize this situation that we have with our public transportation system. We shouldn't talk about it as public transportation. We shouldn't talk about it as the commuter bus service. We should talk about it for what it is. It's a ride to work. For folks who don't have cars, it's a ride to work. When it was my ride to work, there was a woman in town, a Jamaican woman who was raising her family over here. She was a housekeeper, and she found out that she could make better money by cleaning and making up the rooms at Top Notch Resort in Stowe than she could here in this area. I was really inspired by this woman. She'd catch the first bus out of Berry at six A M. with me. We would jump on the Waterbury commuter at six forty in Montpelier. We would join the Route one hundred commuter over in Stowe that would go all the way to Morrisville, and I would get off at my employer on Route one hundred, and she would continue on to Stowe, and she would get off the bus in Stowe, and she would get on the bus that goes up one oh eight, takes workers and skiers to the lodge up there, and she would get out at Top Notch and she'd clean the rooms. She'd reverse that trip on the way home. And, and that was a way that she could best provide for her family and best find opportunity for her family and her household. That's the way she did it, and, and, and I wouldn't recommend four bus trips one way to work, but she, she made that work, and that was good for her. That's not possible today. I want to talk about another thing. You know, I, I do a lot of volunteering. Some people know this, some people don't know this about me, but I, I do a lot of volunteering in the recovery community, which I'm a part of here in town. And a lot of these young guys that are in transition, maybe they're recovering from mistakes that they've made, maybe they're community reentry from state prison, maybe they don't have a license for whatever legal problems that they have, maybe they're trying to kick their addictions, whatever. And I always tell those folks, hey, man, like, best thing you can do for yourself, get, get yourself a full-time job, and I try and encourage them. And not only do I try and encourage them to do that, these guys have a lot of hodgepodge of history and construction and stuff, but I always try and tell them the best thing for yourself is, is to go for a good job. Right now, what I would be recommending is there's a bunch of commercial construction projects happening in Burlington, in FedEx Building, downtown Burlington, different places. And on these big commercial projects, it's not like, the name of the game isn't for the superintendent to save a couple thousand bucks on each labor. The name of the game for the superintendent is to finish on time and within the contract, exactly the way it's written, and they, and they're not really worried about, like, pay or whatever. They'll pay a guy thirty bucks an hour to make sure that they show up every day and whatever. And for these guys in our town that are going through this transition, I would be telling them, hey, man, you can, you, you know, you can pass a drug test right now. Go beg that superintendent for a job. Get that thirty bucks an hour. Piece together ten weeks of thirty-dollar full-time paychecks, and all of a sudden, there's a beat-your-car in a driveway. The fines are paid off. You may be, you're sharing an apartment with your buddy. That's the kind of opportunity that right now, as you've seen from the, the Times Argus article, that's not possible. That used to be possible on the commuter bus system, on the ride-to-work system. Now it's not possible because of the problems that we're having with GMT. That's what's on the line. I want to make sure that people know what's on the line here. And so, um, you know, we, I, I hope that we can continue to be fully invested in, in fixing that problem. I mean, certainly, it is this council's problem to, to fix how the public transportation comes to and from. I know, I want to say one more thing because Counselor reached out to me and said, hey, Jesse, do you have any data, any hard data on the contrast against what Clayton said? He said there was only a few people riding those buses at, at the certain times they cut. And, and at the time, I don't know where my headspace was. I was like, I don't know. I mean, I don't count the people on the bus. I don't know what, if I have any hard data or even if I would know what it is, but I do want to say I do have hard data after I had thought about it for a while, and I can't remember who asked the question, so I apologize. I just really don't remember. But, you know, for more than a decade, no leadership team of GMT ever made the decision to mess with those buses. They recognize the importance of those buses. And so, so that's hard data. For, for, for years and years, multiple leadership teams didn't make that decision. And this leadership team, under the darkness of COVID, decided to cut costs, and I don't really trust their data. I don't trust anything they say, you know. I mean, at one point, they're slashing routes because they don't have the money for them, but then they're, they're taking away the fare boxes because they're, they're flush with COVID money, and then they're, you know, and they're begging for money because the fare boxes are coming. I mean, I don't know what's going on over there, but one thing I do know is that it's more than a Waterbury commuter. It's more than the Northfield commuter. It's more than, you know, not being able to make it to Burlington out of Berry till eight fifteen. I mean, I suppose if you're a banker, which my guys aren't bankers, you know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be too bad if you can make it to Burlington by eight fifteen, but if you're going to the construction site, you gotta be there by seven thirty. You know, that's just the way it goes. But it's also the eighty-nine south, it's the Route two commuter, it's that Route one hundred commuter, and the seasonal time, it's that Mad River Valley bus. It's, it's so much more than just what it's been presented to us. It's like, this is no big deal. It's a really big deal. People that depend on that public transportation system, that really could use the support, and I hope that we can stay squarely focused on pre-pandemic bus levels. Pre-pandemic bus levels, a full recovery of the bus system the way it was, that was working for a long time for our community, and I hope that folks will, will support that. And so, that's, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Here's a good reminder to check in and with our, our representatives on GMT. With that, is, are there any other items for visitors and communication? All right, hearing and seeing none. That takes us to the consent agenda. We have a couple items on the consent agenda. We have our minutes, we have the warrants, we have licenses and permits, which are none. We have ratification of council's approval of the extension request for the abstract grand list lodging. It's ratification of an action we took last week, and that's it for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those, any further discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I see an aye for Counselor Stockwell. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to the Clerk Treasurer's report.
Just a couple things. A reminder to the council that the Board of Abatement, of which you are all members, is meeting next week at six o'clock before the council meeting. We need a quorum of counselors to be present to be able to do business, so I'm hoping that we'll have a, a quorum of at least four of you. Starting at six o'clock next, uh, next Tuesday, I will be sending out the packets of materials tomorrow. They're relatively, it should be relatively quick. I would imagine that, you know, forty-five minutes, we should be, we should be done, certainly in time for the council meeting to start at seven o'clock.
Do I count as a quorum if I'm conflicted out on one of the votes?
For, um, I would say that you would need to, we would need four people participating.
Gotcha.
So, yeah. So if there's one that you're conflicted out with, then we would need four.
Okay.
Not including you.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Um, water and sewer bills are going in the mail on Thursday of this week and will be due by the first, by the end of June. And that's all of that.
So are there any questions? Questions for Clerk Treasurer Dawes? Right, hearing and seeing none. That takes us to the Liquor and Cannabis Control Board.
Yep, we've got one request for alcohol day use permit at Rotary Park. This is for a memorial family event being held on July fifteenth and sixteenth. On, Paula Atkinson is the point of contact. She lives in Michigan, but it's a gathering of the family that's getting together for a memorial event, and our process allows people to apply for permission to bring your own bottle, bring your own beer kind of basis. There are restrictions. They need to be underneath the picnic, picnic shelter. They need to obviously be aware of nobody under the age of twenty-one consuming, and they're responsible for any liability issues, et cetera. So, requires council approval.
Second.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion on the license? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Adopted. Any other items?
Michael, do you, yeah.
And one extension noted. That takes us to the City Manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Just two quick updates for me as well. Just on the committee appointment process, we will have completed eight committee interviews by the end of tonight. Seventeen individuals have been invited for six-six. That seems like a lot, but we try to invite position, people for positions for which there are more seats than there are candidates, so try to make it to the, the seventeen. There might, might go a little bit quicker, and that will leave fourteen positions to interview for on this, on the twentieth. So just, if council is open to it, like, we could possibly start earlier on the twentieth. If that will make the night a little bit shorter, we can, looks like some nodding. And we'll do that then. So we'll start at six P M. on the twentieth, and we'll be able to wrap up all the volunteer appointments on that day. And then just the last thing, the yard waste disposal dates. So we did, we published this on Facebook the day after our, the last council meeting, but we, we were, thanks to the town manager and Berry and their select board, able to extend the use of the yard waste disposal site for additional days. And the, the two days left for Berry City residents to use the disposal site are Saturday, June third, from eight A M. to twelve P M., and Tuesday, June sixth, from ten P M., ten A M. to three P M. So thanks again to Chris and the select board for extending that, the use of the site for our city residents.
Thanks. Any questions? So we'll meet on six P M. on the twentieth.
Yep.
And we're not meeting on the thirteenth, right?
Correct. Unless you really want to.
I always have things to do, Council.
Okay.
All right, so that takes us to our first item of new business, which is an update on preparations to address the emergency housing transition. And you have a presentation.
There's a presentation, Counselor Wazza. Should be down there at the bottom of your.
A lot has changed in the week.
Quite a bit. Yeah, we'll go where some of, where we were, and then what's different.
All right, whenever you're ready.
All right. So a, a lot of these first couple slides you've seen, just a recap for people who are just now joining us, or for everyone to be refreshed. Just the timeline of our planning efforts. We, at the municipal level, we started planning in April with our partners in Montpelier in Berlin, public safety leaders. The groups quickly grew to include some service providers, and you see there from May ninth, press conference mini summit. We've been basically meeting every Wednesday and expect the, some form of the group will continue meeting on a continuous basis. Next slide, again, just a reminder on the numbers. We're looking at two waves of people exiting the motels, and the, the total population from Washington County translates to about three hundred eighty-seven individuals that are currently housed. That's three hundred two adults and eighty-five children in two hundred twenty-three family units. And for the folks exiting June first, it's, none of the children are involved in that. They're, they're captured. The, the families with kids are in the second group, along with the people above sixty, disability, folks in for domestic violence, and you see all those, those other categories there at the bottom of that chart. The next slide is just a recap of what our response has been and what we've been asking for of the state, because we certainly cannot absorb three hundred eighty-seven individuals. The shelters are, are at peak capacity, and it's really focused on staffing, and, and this is just a statewide struggle. We don't, we're not a social service agency. The social service agencies in the city are at capacity. We need the state to leverage its size to, to be able to staff up, and that's project management staff, outreach staff, security, support for shelters, et cetera. Land and space, so we've asked for access to public lands for camping, access to state parks, public buildings for, more recently, not just housing, but for storage. We had a member of our coalition say that there's people who may be camping, may have accumulated things in the motels, and they have no, no place to take them, and certainly can't keep them outside in a camping location. So we reached out, one of our partners reached out this week to ask about state capacity for storage of people's property and their, the things, their, their belongings. And then capital investments and H O P. funding. This is for things like portable toilets, showers, transportation to people who do have housing options elsewhere, transportation for people from the motels to wherever they may be going, and then ice machines, which was a new, a new need that we learned about during one of our coalition meetings. So next, uh, next slide is also a reminder, which is talking about sort of our municipal local resources that are being offered. We've talked about the B O R. under the right conditions, and that's, those conditions are the state fully staffs, fully secures, and fully mitigates the impact for the city, and we've set a really hard deadline of, of September one. The Montpelier Rec Center is being studied as a shelter space as well, though that would probably take some time, would, certainly wouldn't be a near-term solution, certainly not for Thursday. And many social service agencies have been providing camping equipment to people who will be losing housing. I know there are some groups working on go-bags. I mean, this is just the, the place where we've landed, where people may be leaving their hotel on Thursday. They need basics like first aid kits. So I know there's been an effort to prepare some of that as well. Next slide is just a recap of the, we submitted a letter of interest on Friday to the state, which the council received, and it included the, the deadlines that you see there, June one to September one. We laid out a series of requirements to the state for staffing and securing the site, and, and just to be clear on staffing, it includes not just the, the people to be in, in this, in the facility, but the providers providing mental health, peer counseling support, but also things like the, the custodial services, you know, that, that we, we just cannot provide for, for, on a continuous basis for, for what may be a, a large population. So what we're really putting up is the facility, and we expect the other things that come with that facility to be up, to be put up by the, by the state. You know, it also includes ancillary costs, like, we're gonna probably have higher insurance premiums, we're gonna have legal costs, we're gonna have emergency response, it's gonna be strained by potentially having more, a more concentrated population needing response calls. So those things would be, need to be covered by, by the state. We also included rental of portable toilets and showers, and that's to supplement the facilities at the B O R. There's a couple of showers, bathrooms at the B O R. that could be used. We are gonna sort of lock away the, the Spalding locker rooms that are used by the hockey teams, but we can use the locker rooms that have showers and bathrooms otherwise. But if there's a large population, those won't be enough, so we've asked for funding to rent some portable facilities. Some of those, the shower certainly would be placed up at the B O R. The portable toilets, certainly some would be at the B O R., and I'd love to get feedback from even the, the task, the homelessness task force about places where we could place some of those in other parts of the city where there may be needs for those toilets, so people don't have to go up the hill. And then finally, we put in a request to purchase some ice machines. This will help with food security for people that are exiting the hotels. We had a, at the last coalition meeting, a, a resident of one of the motels who's, who's forced to vacate on June one, and she mentioned that one of the things that is gonna be a struggle, you know, potentially camping, this, she's a person who's looking at camping, is, you know, they've had mini fridges, they've had access to fresh food, and that becomes an issue when you're camping. So just having a place to go in to get ice where you're not having to go into a, you know, gas station and, and try to get it from the soda machine. You can just go somewhere where you can grab it, no questions asked. So we put in for three ice machines, excuse me, three ice machines that we would distribute throughout the city for people who have needs for that. Next slide is just some developments since Tuesday. So the state budget was vetoed, and the implications for new funding, those aren't, that's not a typo there. I, I don't know, and I, I, Representatives Williams and Anthony are here to talk and can speak to about that more than I can. Certainly, we also know the speaker has called for a state of emergency to be declared by the governor, which, which hasn't happened yet, but those are the, the, sort of the state policy implications at this point. The Department of, for children and families, announced an extension of general assistance, but this, from all indications, impacts only the people who were scheduled to exit the motels on July one, gives them a twenty-eight day extension. As far as we know, this has no impact on households scheduled to exit motels June one. So this does nothing for the immediate, the immediate exiting of the motels. The state has conducted walkthroughs of the B O R. to inspect it, and so we had the fire, safety, and electrical inspectors on site last week, and we had the plumbing inspector today. We don't have their final reports. We take this as an indication that they're interested, but we haven't really, beyond that, we don't know anything else from them, but, but they have done walkthroughs of the facility. They have agreed that three hundred eighty-seven people could be, could be sheltered there. And then just some updates, really from the local side. This was some of, covering some of the topics of discussion that we had here at council last week. So we, we discussed there, there's no, there's a no camping policy in Berry City that hasn't changed, would have taken an act of the council to change, but we, we, we don't have camping by default. And what, what our public safety personnel have been directed to do is to compassionately, humanely, lead unsheltered individuals to services. That's their, that's their directive when they're, when they're located within the city in an encampment. We're gonna start looking at encampments based on, you know, several factors and evaluating them for public health factors. So are there, this is, and, and we're really modeling this after Montpelier does this, Hartford does this as well, so we're trying to borrow from communities who, who have established policies on this, but we're looking to public health factors when we evaluate encampments. Are there, are there infectious diseases present? Are there incidences of biohazard such as blood, fecal matter that are dangerous? We're looking at it from a public safety perspective. So is there proximity to a sensitive area like a school, like a transited, you know, like the bike path outside of the schools where, where there might be some children transiting? Does it impede traffic in any way? And then from environmental factors as well, so protection of, of designated natural areas, if there's obstruction of regular, regular use of the facility or, or things such as erosion of where an encampment may be set up. And then our interventions will be undertaken sort of a, on a, on a, a scale. They will be, to the extent possible, occurring during regular business hours so that we can connect the people in these encampments to service providers. We will ask encampments to voluntarily relocate. We will do so using outreach specialists, connecting them to outreach specialists, and, and if the above steps fail, and certainly as a last resort, we would post the area against trespassing. So this is, again, this is, we're borrowing here from some of our municipal partners in order to have consistent policies on, on, on this response. And then we, we will not be actively involved in evictions from motels, and, and this is a, an area where our law enforcement has to, also, they have responsibilities to state law, constitution, that, that they will have to follow. So if there are incidents of violence, if there are incidents of vandalism or damage to property, things like that, they will be forced to respond, but it is, it is not gonna be our policy to be actively involved in, in those, in those evictions. Excuse me, Counselor.
So does that mean that it, they need to be actively vandalizing or actively damaging the property, or does it mean that they have already vandalized or damaged the property?
I, I think we're looking, I'm looking to the chief. I think we're, we're talking about sort of an active, an active case of vandalism, you know.
I imagined as much, but I just wanna.
And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, yeah. So if there's someone who's being a threat to themselves or others during the eviction that we are not participating in, but are needed to assist, or if it's,
Absolutely.
That's, that's the types of actions that we're, we're looking at, at a response.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yep. So the last slide is some updates from our partners. This is, and by partners, I mean broadly the group that's been meeting on Wednesdays. We have Erica's here from Another Way, Another Way's been represented, Good Sam, Washington County Mental Health, the, the list of, of Capstone. The, the list goes on and on. A lot of good people who are around the table, including our, our representatives and municipal, and neighboring municipalities. So as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we have reached out to A H S, one of our partners did, to inquire about the use of state facilities for storage. Capstone has also reached out to try to amp up the communication for the July one exiting, which I don't mean to minimize the June one exiting, but the July one exiting is a much more sensitive population, much higher need population. So not to, again, not to take away from the people who have to leave June one, but we're talking about people with medical families. It's a different scale of a challenge, so we, we definitely want to make sure we are increasing communications ahead of that. And then learned that the Vermont Legal Aid, Vermont Legal Aid has filed a lawsuit to stop A H S. from terminating the emergency housing program. They're seeking an injunction to prevent the termination from taking place. They, their causes, I'm just, this is from their press release. I'm just giving, sharing the information. They're alleging that the agency failed to provide proper notice of the end of the program and targeting the state's failure to reestablish rules that were waived during the pandemic. So there's a, a, a hearing set for Thursday, June first, which coincides with the eviction date for many of the people who are in for many of the people who are impacted, but we may know more later that morning. So that, that is it for me. I know we have our state representatives who may be able to speak more about the veto situation. Erica's here from our homelessness task force and Another Way. Brooke, our community outreach specialist is here as well. And then we have our chiefs from public safety, which if, if they have anything to add, I know we've been working and coordinating very closely on this, so it's like we're good to go to the others, yeah.
State Representative Williams or Anthony? Is there anything you, any just insights or predictions you dare make about a veto session? Representative Anthony?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had responded to yourself and Nicholas in the interim since Representative Williams and myself appeared before you last week. I have no reason to believe that a vote tomorrow or June 20th would produce a different result. I'm hopeful, but if there is no difference in the result, then there is no budget. And I have, and Representative Williams have received some exploratory discussions from the speaker as to what that means, having no budget. And it means some very serious and uncharted territory. As I'm sure you know from your discussions on Wednesday meetings with your partners, at least those who depend on state funds, that is in jeopardy if there is no budget. I don't wanna harp on that because we have, Vermont has had a situation where a budget that was initially agreed to, proposed, failed to succeed in all the steps necessary to be in place by July 1. And in that instance, in those instances, a special session is called, and budget changes, new proposals are entertained, and with or without the administration's active consideration, you take another vote on a modified proposal. And if that one passes the General Assembly, both houses, is not vetoed, then we have a budget. If it is vetoed, then we're back to, is there an override or is there not? Let me digress a little bit away from the state situation with respect to a budget. I, as your mayor, some time ago, faced very close to June 30, witching hour without an accepted budget in the city of Barry. The advice I got at the time frankly left a lot more choice to the city of Barry because we do not depend on state funds, generally speaking, at least in the first instance, nor federal. We have authority through our charter for basic police powers, so we can function. That doesn't make anybody any more comfortable because our state partners cannot function. So it's a problem, but it is not, our problem here to maintain governance is not the same as the state impasse without a budget. So with that, let me see if there are any specific questions. I don't wanna really speculate other than reminding everybody what the vote was on May 12, and I have no reason, I have no inside information to report to you that somehow it will be transformed. If I had that information, I certainly would convey it. But I only wanna say what I'm confident about, and I'm not confident that the result of the vote were held tomorrow would be any different. Thank you.
Thank you for the summary, Representative Anthony.
I just have a process question. Is there, is there a reason the override session cannot be held before the 20th? Is there a time limit that establishes when that's held?
No, there is no time limit. It's frankly agreed upon, was agreed upon by the leadership of the General Assembly, both houses, just to save that date purposely, to make sure that a quorum was available. But no one knew at the time those dates were set that we would need it, and which bills or budget reconsideration would be scheduled for those days was purely a scheduling issue. There is no, if you will, template for when that has to occur. There is a template, obviously, between the delivery of a bill and the governor having a certain number of days to decide how to dispose or sign that bill. But there is nothing for having a veto session. That's up to the leadership of the General Assembly.
I would add to what Peter said, he's absolutely correct, in that there is an adjournment resolution that is passed by both the House and the Senate that specifies those dates as being when we shall reconvene. And as such, those dates were chosen long, long ago, prior to any knowledge of forthcoming challenges. So there is something written down specifying that that is when we shall reconvene.
Thank you both.
Lozong.
Thank you. Have a question regarding the memo that went out on May 26. I was a little taken aback by not a, not an invitation to negotiate, but basically the statement that a fee, that the fee from June 1st to September 1st is $29,025 a day for a period not to exceed 90 days. That's $900,000 a month. What was the, I guess I'd just like to know how, we had the discussion at the council level, and nothing ever came up at the council level. We certainly talked about security, we talked about facility, we talked facilities, but we never talked about a fee of $900,000 a month or $2.7 million for the summer.
Yeah, so we worked, so we had to put a cost in this budget, in this memo. And our rationale was, this is, we're taking non-risk, we don't know what the condition of facility will be after this. We don't know the full extent of the costs of taking this on. So we came with a template of about $75 per day per person, assuming the full 387. We did that for the full time range. That was well below sort of what the state has paid for the motels. And it was basically our best estimate to protect the city's interests. So if a state...
But there's other parts of the memo where you say you will, and I absolutely agree, if there's any damage to the facility, you will be responsible for that. If there, if there are costs that, for example, public safety, if an officer has to respond, you will pay separately for that. So we have all of those things in the à la carte. And honestly, I looked at the $900,000 a month, and again, I was surprised to see it. I appreciate what you're trying to do and how you're trying to protect the city, but you did protect the city with regard to damages, the facility itself, you know, additional public safety time, you did protect the city in that regard. And then adding on $900,000 a month on top of that only uses up a budget that I think other people might put better use to. So I guess I'd like to, I'd like to see some sort of amendment or something to the memo saying, look, we're willing to talk about that number, because the number might not be $29,000 at all, and I want to make sure that before we start absorbing the lion's share of any budget, of any state budget, at the expense of other service providers, that we really think that through.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're open to the state talking about this fee. It's, it's an unknown, right? That's one of the things, is that this is an unknown, this could become a site for 90 days for 387 people, and despite, despite a very thorough process that we went through to try to identify all the potential risks, we still didn't know. And so we were trying to put the city in a position where, as a traditional service provider, we wanna make sure that we are covered, that this doesn't negative, have negative impacts moving forward. Things to the extent of, could this lead to loss of future rental revenue for people who may have come here today but won't come here, and then won't come here in the future because they find another long-term location to do their events? Those kinds of things, we just have no understanding of what the long-term impacts of this will be. So it's a fee-based, that's the rationale we came to it. If the state would like to tell us what they think the fee should be, we're not gonna close the door on them. But we were trying to put sort of the city's strongest position forward.
Okay. It wasn't, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but that wasn't reflected in the memo, that, you know, obviously, it's going to be, if, if, and this is even a big if, if the state said we would like to use a facility, I suspect it's going to be a very long and protracted conversation until we get to an agreement that everyone's happy with.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's understood by the state, that, you know, we're, there are some things, public safety, the security of the facility, there are some points that we're just not gonna negotiate on.
Right.
But there, make sure folks understand that there are some areas where we can have a discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, at the end of the day, we just would like to help if we could.
Absolutely. And look, it's a letter of interest, it's not a contract, so, you know, we're willing to talk to them. At the same time, we are acknowledged, we are putting, we are taking a risk for the city, and being the place that will be the draw for central Vermont. And knowing the full impact of that is difficult, and so we just wanted to have a strong position when we dealt with the state on it.
Also, you know, this central Vermont has a pretty high proportion, maybe a little bit lower than Rockland, I think we might have had the second highest share of any region in the state. When you talk about the lion's share of the budget, Council Lozong, do you know what that budget is, given that there is no budget?
Well, I mean, obviously, as we both know, it's a moving target. We've heard 12.5 million, we've heard 100 million, and we've heard every number in between.
Yeah.
But even, you know, but again, what, I'm certainly interested, I don't want to be out of pocket. If, if there were any repairs needed to the facility, then obviously, that will have to be taken care of by others, not by the city of Barry. And I absolutely agree, I don't wanna put the city at risk. And I thought you did a good job in all of the other areas, but then there was that $29,000 number with no, with no invitation in the memo to say, look, if there's something in here that you need to talk about or you don't agree with, we're willing to have a discussion. We're not, not willing to have a discussion about public safety.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think, you know, Council Lozong, it's a letter of interest, and so we're trying to do the best we can to, to have a starting point. Like I said, our template was a very, you know, somewhat crude, it was 75 bucks per person per day, assuming the full population, which I know wouldn't happen all at once. But we would be, you know, one of the other things that, you know, we thought about is like, this may put the facility out of commission for the summer regardless of what happens, right? Once we, once we go down the step of opening it up, it, people will make arrangements elsewhere, right? And so we're taking, we're taking a three-month risk, so I think we need to be commensurate with that, no matter, you know, no matter where this ends, that this is a...
We didn't have any bookings, did we?
What's that?
We didn't have any bookings during...
We don't have, we don't have a ton of bookings there. It serves as a rain site for the concerts in the park, which, which will have to move elsewhere if this moves forward. But, yeah, I mean, once, we do have summer camps that we're gonna have to relocate from the Civic Center complex in all likelihood, so, yeah.
But even as an opening, you know, an opening position, it's a very reasonable, more cost-effective than step that the state could take in what they're doing today. So, you know, I think it, even though, you know, it's, there may be some give, it's a good, it's a good starting position, and it may be very, very reasonable for the state to say yes to, and given the ancillary impacts that the city could absorb if we did see the numbers that are projected. Counsel Stockwell?
I have a couple of questions about the camping policy. So people are camping now, will that continue with people not looking, with the city not officially looking at the camping that's ongoing? And if we're going to move them, you know, if you're gonna connect them to services, but in fact, there's no housing for the services to connect them to, is there a plan B? I mean, connect people to a social worker, but if there's no housing, there's no housing.
Yeah, so, I mean, we acknowledge people are camping, you know, we, the, there are organizations who are directing people to areas where camping is allowed and possible, and so that would be one of the, that's one of the things we're working on with Brooke, our outreach specialist, is to be able to connect people to, who can direct people in encampments to locations where it's happening. And I think one of our, you know, what we've talked about with our safety leadership, our public safety leadership, is, are those factors that we talked about, how we approach the encampments that we find, based on those, based on those factors. The people who are in encampments now are more than likely not disturbing residents who are reporting this to our public safety officials. When they're reported to us, it's when we, you know, have an obligation to respond one way or the other. So that's, that's one factor, and certainly when, when our officers make contact with the encampments, these are the things they look at, the factors that are listed are the things they look at as well. So really, Counsel Stockwell, and I think I answered your second question first, which was, we will connect, right now, the shelters are full, right? So the normal policy would be, there's no camping, here's Good Sam, right? And here's a potential bed for you, a Good Sam. Good Sam doesn't have any beds now. Right now, because Barry has no camping policy, it's, here's, here's a location where camping is happening, and where you can, where you can camp where it is allowed. So that's, that's, that's the best we can do at this moment, given the policy we have.
Thank you. And suppose that the state does not fund the BOR by June 1, which does in fact seem a little unlikely to me. Is there, is there something else that is going to happen that's recommended by the homelessness preparation team?
It's, the default is camping. I think people are just preparing for that at this point. And there's no, there's no other viable location that I'm aware of that's an indoor shelter in central Vermont that can serve the function that the BOR can at this point. So, you know, I'm looking to Erica and others on the, you know, on the call who may be have more to add, but my understanding is that it's a preparation for camping at this point for the people who are exiting June 1.
Counsel...
Thank you.
Counsel Wazak, and then Counsel Shumbell.
My biggest concern is that I think we have a lack of a clearinghouse for people looking for apartments. I think that if we had a way to bring landlords together with renters, and I know that a lot of the people that I've talked to who are staying in the motels, one of the largest issues that they have is meeting all of the requirements for the apartments, is the credit checks, and I understand the financial burden of the first, last, and security deposit. You also have to have clean background, and, you know, a lot of people don't at this point with some of the situations going on. You also have to have good credit scores, and there are a lot of requirements that are part of this. And I just wonder if there's a way that we can try to bring landlords together, and we have some really large property managers in our region. And I think that if we were able to possibly bring some of those resources together, and maybe have a housing fair, I mean, we have job fairs all the time, but if we could bring landlords to an area where, hey, we have all these apartments, or, and I know that there's a lack of housing, but there are apartments out there. So if we could maybe bring tenants and landlords together to a neutral clearinghouse or site of some sort, I think that, that might help. It's not gonna help today or tomorrow, but it might help in a week, you know, to get these people in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel. And I think that there's a lot of, a lot of that assistance that's provided by the service providers. I think in Capstone provides some of these services to connect people with, with housing options. I think in Capstone provides some of these services to connect people with with housing options. My my sense from from our partners is that the the stock is just extremely limited. So even even where we can make those connections, there's just not a lot of places for people to go. We hear anecdotally about people with vouchers who still can't, who that that have them expire for lack of being able to find housing. So I I think if if the the stock were were in better shape, that that would be definitely a solution. Just not sure that there's a lot of places for people to land at this moment.
Counsel Wazak?
Yeah, so Counselor Stockwell asked a couple of my questions. But I'm going to be, I'm going to be a bit harsh here. The no camping policy in Berry City is bullshit. It just is. There are people camping in Berry City right now, and we know that, and there are going to be more of them in two days. There just are. Talking about what we're doing with encampments, referring them to service providers. It was just said that the service providers are at capacity. The answer the service providers have given us is that they're giving camping equipment. So just to say that what we're going to do is refer them to service providers because they can't camp in Berry City, the service providers are giving them sleeping bags and say, good luck camping. And yes, it makes a lot more logical sense to go to Montpelier because they have more space, they have more wooded areas, there's just physically more room in Montpelier for people to camp, and I understand that, but that's not what's going to be happening. So I don't understand why I completely, I it was my misunderstanding or my mistake, I did not, I was not clear that there was an explicit, you cannot camp in Berry City policy. I'm completely in favor of revoking that, just because I think it's a joke. I just really think it's a joke that we are having people who are being kicked out of hotels. The service providers are saying, we can't do anything except give you bug spray, tick spray, and a sleeping bag. And then we're going to say, no, you can't use that sleeping bag in Berry City. I I think that's just completely unacceptable. I think it's a joke. I think it's inhumane. I think that people get way too concerned with how safe or not encampments are without really discussing the reality of the fact, which is there are no other alternatives right now. If we're not going to open the B O R on June first, and I completely understand that we need to have systems in place to support that, and that those systems and that funding is not available because the state screwed this up. I get that. But if we're not going to open up the B O R, and if our actual policy is to compassionately lead unsheltered individuals to service providers, we can compassionately take them to pick the, pick up their sleeping bag, and then we're going to discompassionately say, you can't do that in Berry City. And that is not okay by me. So no, I do not, you know, if if there are public safety issues, if there is violence, if there is, you know, property destruction happening in encampments, yes, we need, the the homeless folks are just as entitled to their legal rights as folks with homes. And their property needs to be protected just as much. But to, it's cyclical. It's just reading through this presentation, and this isn't an indictment of you at all, Nicholas. You are responding to the factors that that we are here under. But to say that there's no camping in Berry City, that will provide you to the service providers who are at capacity and who are going to be giving them camping equipment, to say that there is no housing, it's ju, it it just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. So I I'm just really kind of taken aback by the fact that we are saying, you know, listen, we're going to do everything we can to help, except allow you to do the one thing that's left as an availability to you. I just don't, it it's just doesn't, it does not work for me. And it 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 makes me really upset because I think if the above steps fail as a last resort, post the area against trespassing. All right, so we're going to have, let's just say, ten set, ten tents get set up right in Courier Park. And then we have a couple of issues, things go down as a last resort. We're going to put no trespassing signs up around Courier Park just because we can't find housing for ten of our neighbors because the housing isn't there, the apartment. Great, let's find the twenty-five available apartments in Berry City. Let's get folks into those apartments. There's still just under three hundred people who are going to be homeless within the immediate vicinity of Berry City. And this is where the service providers, this is where the courthouse is, this is where the service provider offices is, this is where a lot of state offices are. They're going to be here. They are going to be camping. They are already camping. And I just do not want any part of tearing down tents or saying, listen, we know you have no options but to camp, but that one thing that you can do, you can't do here. That is not how you build a welcoming community, and I am a little mad. So I don't know if I have, I guess I don't have a question in there, I just don't.
I mean, if 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 I might, Counsel, you're, I mean, you're right, this is part of the nature of the of the challenge here. And and here's what we're facing when we're trying to implement this, right? So so there is by default, no camping. We, you know, we we don't know, and this, this is just to set the 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 stage for what I'm about to say, which is, we don't, we don't own large tracts of land without a a public reason, right? We've talked about that. We we, if we had a large tract of land without a public use where it was suitable to camp, it's it's an easy thing. We don't, and municipalities by definition don't. The land and buildings we we own are for specific public use, right? So what's going to happen is if we do not designate, if there's no designated camping, there's going to be inherent conflicts between the users of those spaces or the private property owners where those encampments are happening. So we could have a camping policy. I think our challenge collectively as a staff has been, and we've, we've been talking about this at the department head level also since April. Where is the, where is the camping going to be allowed, right? Because if we don't set the parameters, Chief Vale's officers and Chief Cushman's firefighters are going to be, they're going to be going, they're going to be caught in that vicious circle, right? So if we don't say camping is okay in Courier Park, the neighborhoods in Courier Park are going to force a response, right? If we say, if we say there's camping, then we say there's camping in Courier Park. If we say there's camping in the cow pasture, then there's camping in the cow pasture. If we say there's no camping in the cow pasture, and someone goes up to the meadow and they see ten camps, they're going to call Chief Vale, and he's going to have to respond. And what is he going to do, right? Well, the policy is there's no camping. So I think if we went, we beat this around the bush as many times as we could, we don't know where the appropriate place to designate for camping is. If council wishes to designate those, then that gives us the North Star we need to enforce camping or no camping. Otherwise, we're setting up a series of conflicts on public land or on private land. So I I don't think you should take this to say that this is city staff saying there's no camping. If there want, if there, if there will be camping policy here, we need to know where that camping is allowed so that our public safety professionals can can reduce, frankly, reduce conflict, right? That that will be caused by by that happening.
No, absolutely. I think, and that's what I was, that's what I was trying to identify, and you just said it much more eloquently than I did, is that there is a conflict between all of these policies, and when you put them together, they don't line up. And it it's, you know, we're not going to find, Counsel Lozong says this all the time, we are not going to find a solution that pleases everybody. But, yeah, the cow pa, if we're going to have camping in Berry City, the cow pasture makes sense. Those extremities of the city-owned land that are in the cemeteries that are not habited by any memorials, that makes more sense. And I'm just, I just don't think that we can continue on for the next however long this thing is going to last by just saying that there's no camping in Berry City. I just don't think it's intellectually honest, and it puts us, and not us, I shouldn't say us, it doesn't affect me, our public safety folks, in a really severe conflict, and none of, and that's not okay. And I don't think that's the right way to address this.
We have Counsel Sean Beldon, I see Erica Rail, Jesse Rosato, Rick Angeles, and then ma- maybe Ellen Kay. Just out of curiosity, where in our code of ordinances is camping prohibited?
There's, I think there's no affirmative camping policy.
But there's no prohibition.
There's no
I want to see.
Prohibition on
Know where it is in our ordinances.
In Mistletoe, it says that parks are closed at dusk.
So that, that's not an anti-camping policy.
The the cow pasture doesn't, has no camping. But there's, by, it's just by default, there's no, that's, there's just no, no camping.
By default, by under what law? That's my question. What's the law that says you cannot camp?
There's no
Parks are closed at dusk. You can't be in, you're not supposed to be in the bark, the parks after dusk.
All right, so might be something to, when we think about policy, what's the legal structure? Counsel Shumbell?
May I add, advocate to Erica first, since she seemed to be answering, no, on the Okay. Do we have any idea how many folks we're talking about, at least for the first? My understanding is the state hasn't even been
About about a hundred for the first round.
And are we definitively sure they're all coming here?
No, I think there's about thirty, twenty-nine or so that are housed currently in a Berry motel. That doesn't mean they'll all come here. It also doesn't mean that the folks who are housed in other municipalities and motels won't come here either. So we're, we're, we've been talking about the numbers as Washington County numbers, so Washington County is about a hundred.
Okay. And so we don't really know the magnitude of the problem for our particular city.
No.
Okay. And and then piggybacking on what Counsel Wazak is saying, yeah, I mean, this sounds like a ridiculous catch twenty-two in every way. But if we do open up camping at a place like the cow pasture, you know, and this I think has been counted, you know, pointed out before, how is that going to be monitored, so to speak?
Yeah.
You know, what is the accessibility to simple surfaces like water, food, et cetera? That's a, you know, for some people, that's a schlep. You know, if you, all of a sudden at nine o'clock at night, you notice you don't have any water, or what are you going to go? Schlepping down to Cumberland Farm someplace? Probably not. It's going to be an issue. I I just, I think, and I am assuming that people have been in these conversations thinking about what it would open up if we do have camping opened up in various places. And it's not that, you know, I, we're caught very short. So my last question is, is there any possibility that the lawsuit that's being looked at on the first at eight-thirty in the morning could yield some sort of happy answer for us? And they say, oh, you'll all have to stay here until blah, 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 but probably not.
I mean, we're, it's, it's, it's hopefully, I mean, there'd be an injunction and hard for me to say what what, what the, how the judge will rule, but that's certainly a hail mary that would buy everyone a lot of time. I mean, I'll, I'll just say on the cow pasture, I I I spend a lot of time in the cow pasture. I don't know of a lot of good places to camp in the cow pasture besides the meadow. A lot of the, the rest of the cow pasture is is extremely wooded. And then it's, it's a somewhat narrow property, and so if you're sort of camped in between the trails, it it's, there there's potential for conflict, right? That's all I'm saying. And and then the the meadow, certainly the meadow is is an area where one of the ta, the trails goes right down the middle. So it's not near water, as you mentioned, Counsel, it's not near power for people who need to power devices. There's like three parking spots up there, so we're talking about a significant issue up on that, in in that neighborhood, and not to say, not to do it, I'm just saying, these are, these are the kinds of things that we talked about with the department heads, about what are the, you know, what do we do? And do we open up the cow pasture? Well, there's all these, there's these factors.
And if you are opening up a place like the cow pasture, at what point does the same letter that went to the state about the B O R go to the state about, well, would you come over to the cow pasture and do mitigation and provide this and provide that, blah, blah, blah?
Right, there's no facilities up there.
At the end of the day, this is a state mess-up. And the fact that we are covering their rear ends is a little pathetic.
Your girl?
Sorry, Erica Rail, I've been, live on Bass Street, I'm a Berry City resident. For one thing, if you open up a place, a localized place for camping, in my experience, it's actually good to have a centralized, not a centralized place, but a a place where people can gather. There are places that people are camping that are hidden. We don't know where they are. And so emergency services don't know where they are. And if there is a centralized place, emergency services know where they are, we know where they are, we can get food, water to them, emergency services, whatever they need. Maybe they aren't ideal. But, you know, it's it's a centralized place where we can send folks. We know where those folks are. And those are, are, you know, maybe the cow pasture, I've never been in the cow pasture, maybe it isn't ideal for you or I, but it's a place where somebody can go. I am one of those service organizations, and I'm doing the hail mary of just saying, I don't know what's going to happen to you. But this is what I can do for you. And the other comment I had is, yeah, you know, telling somebody, a service organization will be there for you nine to five. That's when that crisis happens. I'm on call twenty-four hours a day. I get texts at one AM in the morning from people having a crisis. So we have folks that are homeless that are going to work in the morning. So telling them that a service provider will be there for them at three o'clock, they, folks work hourly. You know, they have to get off work, go see a service provider about homes. I'm answering messages, I'm answering texts, I'm answering phone calls, three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning. So helping, you know, saying, somebody will be with you, you know, you have to be here for this nine AM appointment, they, they, folks can't do that. You have to have folks on call. And I'm sorry, you know, I'm saying, what you're doing is not good enough, what you're doing is great here, but there has to be more. And, you know, it's really hard to look somebody in the face saying, this is all you can, all I can do for you. And the the answer is, I don't know. And then Mother Nature being, you know, the wonderful jokester she is, it's going to be ninety degrees on ninety. And I'm asking folks, what are you doing? Are you handing out water? I know I am. Are you opening your doors? I'm not saying I'm, you know, the queen mother, but what what else can we do? We have to do more for folks. And there are folks already on the streets. It's not just the people that are coming out of hotels, they're already here in our streets. So we have to be a better Berry and a better community for these folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Rail. So we have a couple of people in front of you, Counsel Jane. We have Jesse Rosato, Rick Angeles, Ellen Kay, then we can loop back.
I'm Jesse Rosato from Merchant Street, and um, thank you, city manager, for for this work. I'm really impressed by it. I love what you do. You know, I'm going to surprise some people here. I mean, first, I want to say that I'm a compassionate human being. You know, I founded the Laundry Love in this town. I work with the Berry and Faith community over here. We put together buckets for, with first aid and different survival stuff for people, hand them out to homeless people. I was a good friend, I am a good friend of, well, I was, my pastor was Pastor David, the Congregational Church over here. And so we, you know, I'm familiar with the homeless community. We ran the breakfasts. And uh, and I'm also a progressive-minded person, so I'm a compassionate person. I'm also a person that's very glad to see this hotel policy end. It has been, folks are only seeing one side of this deal. Like, you guys don't know how much of a disaster this hotel policy has turned into. There are some people that have, you know, there's some people that used to be unhoused, living in their parents' basement. And all of a sudden, well, if the state's can give me a hotel room, I can have my girlfriend over, you know, I'm going to do, I'm going to go do that. You know, there's people that I know of in the sober community, you know, there's room, there's rules at these halfway houses and these, these uh, sober living situations. And these folks are like, let's screw these rules. States can give me a hotel room, I'll just go boot heroin all day. And not to say that that's all the people, but that is some of the people. And I'm sure that our our police and fire could tell us, you know, the beat cops can tell us about that. I've been in hotel rooms, you know, in twelve-step calls, you know, trying to talk people off the ledges. You know, I have, you know, I've I've been all through this community. I even had a sponsee who couldn't handle the, 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 the the policies at a silver living house over in Monuski. And he ended up in a hotel up in South Burlington, and his story ended when they found him dead in that hotel room. And his two adult children had to go in there with trash bags and try and salvage a few memories from that person. So there's another side to this.
And Jesse, if I could just jump in just to keep it future-focused and solutions-oriented, we're not here to debate whether or not the state's hotel policy was right or wrong. We're trying to figure out what what can we do.
Right, so, great. Great, so, great, and so I'm getting there, I, I just wanna make sure, because I've heard a lot of people like, talk about, like, the other side of this issue, and I haven't heard this side of the issue, I wanna make sure that this side of the issue is represented in this conversation today, so I just did it. You know, the fact is, is that, hey, man, if we're gonna have some camping, let's put them in the, in, in, in the middle of this town, right here. Right in front of the, all these churches, right there, there's where the services is, you know, there's where the people that can really help. And let's not like, turn our whole world upside down just because we're responding to this issue. The reality is, is that we're the state of Dr. Dinosaur, nobody's gonna let little kids go live under the bridge, you know what I'm saying? So, so as soon as these parents and these kids get kicked out of the hotel rooms, they're gonna be right up there at the McFarland House with their case managers. And the state is gonna do what they're, what they do, and they're gonna make sure that the vulnerable populations. And then we're gonna end up with this crew of people who find themselves unhoused, and some of them are gonna go back and live in their parents' basement, some of them are gonna fight for their, you know, and, and, and get ready to go to work or whatever, find a place. And then we're, ultimately, we're gonna land at a place where we've always been, like Berry City Council's not gonna end homeless list, you know what I'm saying? We're gonna end up with the fifty-hundred homeless people in town that we've, in this community, this Central Vermont area that we've always had. We're gonna end up right back where we always have been. So really, what we had to do is, we gotta survive the next thirty days of this influx period where things are gonna get weird. And I really love, and I don't know what that means, I don't know if we say, hey, for the next thirty days, you can, you can, you know, if you need a place to go, you need a place to be all night, be out, out here in this park out here in the middle of town? So then the law enforcement and people can keep an eye, we know where they are, and we can service them and help keep them safe, have them there with services, other people that are willing to help them. I don't know if it means that if we got public works people that are gonna put out an extra twelve to fifteen public trash cans, you know, because there's gonna be additional trash, you know, those kind of things, I love the ice machine idea. I would have never thought of that, but that was a good one, you know, so I hope that we get into that stuff. But, and, and hey, man, if the state gives us three million bucks, man, listen, you know, that's a, that's a win, like, maybe, you know. But really, like, I don't, you know, I don't see, what this, what this has been is, this was a medical emergency that affected the whole globe, and we needed to have those people have a place where they can have hygiene, that they can isolate themselves, that moment has passed. We are past that moment, we're gonna move on from that moment. And it sounds like, under some very calm and, and solid leadership, thank you, City Council, uh, City Manager, that we're gonna do that, and, and, and so I, I just encourage us to, to not freak out and just, just, just try and get through the next thirty days. I think in thirty days from now, we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna be back to where we've always been. Thanks.
Rick D'Angelo's.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Rick D'Angelo, I'm the co-executive director of the Good Samaritan Haven. There's a few things that I wanted to share with you that may help you to, may help us to think about the numbers and the impact and so forth. First, we have staff that are based in the hotels, and we're talking with people, we have been right along. And yes, there will be a number of people that work out their own solutions, and it's a minority, but there are some number that do have other plans. So let's say out of the hundred that are leaving on June one, not all of those hundred are gonna be looking to camp. Secondly, just got an announcement, two motels are providing a fifteen-day grace period, so they represent over half of the people that are scheduled to leave on June one. So of that hundred, now we're down to fifty that are leaving on June one. And those other fifty people have an additional fifteen days to work on solutions. Thirdly, we do have vacancies, openings, a Good Sam. And we're trying to process people as quickly as possible, so that should help a little bit too. And then lastly, we are looking at two shelter options to make available forty to eighty shelter beds on July first. That could also help out with this problem. So I'm feeling pretty good about that, and we're gonna be meeting with the state on Friday to look at one of the sites. And I'm really hoping that that can provide a significant option to offset the impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Ellen Kay, you're up next. Rick, I'm sorry, I said Rich, I meant Rick, yeah.
Um, I raised my hand a while back, I'm mostly not gonna say anything of what I was gonna say. I, I would like to see that if there, and I'm glad to hear what Rick just said, but I would like to see that if there were an encampment, it would be something that the community could help support. So not way off in the cow pasture, away from services, away from people, but in a place where we could be bringing supplies that are needed, somebody could be coordinating that effort, the community could come together. Instead of just othering these folks, who many of us would be in those shoes with the loss of two or three paychecks or even one paycheck. So they're, they're not different, and so I just would love, I think it's an incredible opportunity for Berry to show what it's made of in terms of support, and I'd like to call it an encampment. A camping policy means people who do camping for recreation. This is on, this is sheltering outside, and these people are surviving, they're not camping, they're surviving. So I just always want us to remember that. And thank you all for working so hard on this, because I know this is quite an emergency.
Back to Counselor Jane.
I just had a couple of questions for you, Erica, if you don't mind. So you have some experience in the council, you also have some experience with the homelessness stats course. And I, you said that we need to do more, and, and that we need to do better. And I just wanna know what your thoughts on are, how we can do more and how we can do better?
I think by do more, more talking to more service providers and showing up more in the, this catches me off guard, talking to more service providers and just reaching out more toward the local community nonprofits.
Service providers as far as whom?
Um, service providers such as Good Sam, Another Way, the disability community, Downstreet, Disability Rights, just to name a few.
Aren't these all-agency groups that are working with you guys once a week?
Uh, I didn't hear all of them, I, I, I think several of them sounded like they were in there, yeah.
Several, yes.
I just wanna get your, you know, advice, because I think that you have some valuable information.
Thank you. There's also the, the interfaith groups that are doing a lot of homelessness work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Rosasak?
Um, yeah, just some follow, a follow-up question for Rick. The, how many, you mentioned a couple vacancies for, were you talking about beds, like available shelter beds? How many-ish are, do you have?
I, I can't really say, but today we had, I think, three shelter beds at Seminary, Seminary Street available. So it changes from day to day, people leave, people come, so, but we are, we have sent around a number for our partners and the police to call, and they can, people can do an intake with us, and we'll get them housed as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you, and then just, I, I assume this, but the hotels that are extending that grace period, those are Berry area hotels?
Yeah, the Washington County, I'd rather, uh,
Yeah, you don't have to name them, I was just,
Yeah, I'd rather not name them.
They're local, they're not in Rutland or St. Albans, they're
No, these are Washington County, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And they're the, they're, they're the two largest hotels in Washington County, so I can say that much.
Thank you, and then just thank you for all your work on the, everything else you talked about, okay. I would also, sorry, but then I was thinking, something else that I thought of as we were talking about all of this is perhaps a suspension of the, with all due respect, nonexistent non-camping policy through September one or something like that. Might give us more flexibility rather than just a blanket, we're gonna do this forever, but, just an idea.
Just to, um, to jump in, so we, uh, first, first approach is try to see what we can do for a shelter in the B O R. That's goal one. If that falls through, and maybe even in spite of that, there may need to be some form of an encampment policy, and what I'm hearing from the expert, experts in the subject matter is that some clustering may be more advantageous in terms of providing necessary services to that. And that although the city may not have an explicit ordinance, we do have some ordinances that maybe in play that limit certain facilities for certain uses that would need potentially to be evaluated or changed on maybe an emergency basis. I think if we go that route, I, it would be good to get the opinion of the homelessness test. I, I think it would be good to get the opinion of the homelessness task force and the planning commission and staff on potential locations that, that, that may be, may be suitable, and then still what type of ancillary services. Like, do, do we, do we look at a trailer, the bathroom trailers or the water, those types of things? And I, it's, this is just such a tragedy, it's a tragedy that this has been foisted on municipal governments by the state. Yeah, and I, you know, I think the governor is a man of character, but on this issue, it's just really has, has fallen down, but I'm hopeful that, you know, that they're, 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 they're acting now with more urgency. They're listening to the municipalities and, but the timeline, and they've extended the July first cohort, but there's still this immediate need, which may be lessened based on what Rick said than, than we, we think. It's just the unknowns that are making, that make us so nervous, right? So, and the potential conflicts that everybody's gonna have to manage. I'm just curious from our police and fire chief, what impacts are you already seeing? And what, what do you, what do you think, based on your expert knowledge, what do you anticipate in the next week?
So it's, it's hard to say as far as
Sorry, chief, if you could, we'll get yelled at if you don't.
Yeah.
It's all right.
Um, it's, it's hard to say is, based on what Rick and everybody's saying about what's available now. The issue becomes, you know, if, if all the other communities in the state allow camping, it would kinda be a fair playing field. But if only select few communities offer camping, the adage of build it and they will come, we're not talking just Washington County folks that'll be here, other people will be coming in, which will strain our resources. And then once, once you cluster that, then you have to have somebody to staff it, to deal, you know, with those services, to provide the services to the community. So it's, it's hard to say what we anticipate, but, you know, as was mentioned, we're already seeing some camping here. We're not out there proactively looking for it, and we're not, you know, we're not trying to criminalize it. We're trying to, a- as it's been stated, we're leading these folks to resources, understanding, as we've all known and discussed, those resources are slim. You know, but if, if we do get a mass influx, yes, it's gonna strain the resources that we have to provide those services. I don't know if that really answered your question.
No, yeah.
You, you know, it, it's hard to anticipate what's gonna happen, it's kind of a wait-and-see approach.
Yeah, Rick, are you still there?
Um, yes.
Just out of curiosity, have you, have you gone back to pre-pandemic occupancy levels?
Not at the one oh five North Seminary, we're at twenty, we're at seventeen there now. Our actual permitted occupancy there is thirty, but I'll tell you, we're really uncomfortable with that. We're not sure that it's a safe number of people to have in that building. So, so the answer is, we have not gone back to that at one oh five, and I don't think we will ever go back to that.
And at one point there, the churches were taking overflow, are they not doing that anymore?
Uh, we are talking with one of the churches right now in Montpelier about the possibility of that starting July first.
But there was, there were churches in Berry City that were doing it, correct?
That's correct, well, it's like running a shelter, so it's, you know, you have to approach it like you would any shelter. You have to staff up, you have to get permits, you have to, you have to be prepared to, it's not something you can just throw up quickly.
Thank you.
So one thing that kind of eluded me in, in most of this conversation is that some of these individuals have animals, pets, dogs, cats. And I just wanted to make us all aware that we're also gonna have that crisis of an influx of dogs and cats in our community with these individuals. And it really is just something else that we as a community need to prepare for. And really, I didn't think about it much, but, but really, in this entire process, it's like, wow, you know, just homeless once, couldn't have my dog, and someone was able to take my dog, thankfully. But what about those individuals who aren't able to, to kinda have somewhere for their animal to go? So again, it's just another one of those issues in this complex problem, but I just wanted to put that out there, so that way we are thinking about that as well.
So to potentially land this, and I see Sam, you have your hand up. I don't know if council would be comfortable with asking the homelessness task force and the planning commission to hold an emergency meeting, and, and then also to get feedback from staff on prospective locations that could work while we wait and to hear back from the state on the B O R options, just as a, a possible way to be ready. And so, Molina and Sam, Counselor Stockwell.
Thank you, I'm wondering if, from the people in the homelessness task force, if there's a shared sense of camping across the three communities? In other words, Dumont Pelier, Berlin, and Berry, all of which have people camping, have a sense of, this is a, this is a shared burden of Washington County, and we'll all do similar things for the population?
To answer the question, I believe so, yes. I think that we've, I'm gonna just speak for both Montpelier and, and Berry, because I'm on both task force, but I believe that because there's so much influx between folks going back and forth between the two city, between the three cities, that, that folks have, you know, services here, Berlin and Bear, um, Montpelier, that people camp where they feel safe, where they have supports, where they have families. Or sometimes they, they end up getting stuck in Berry, Berlin, or Montpelier, and just end up camping where their friends are, where their family is, or where they just lay their head down for the night. If that answers your question, Counselor.
Thank you.
Think I could help, I, I can add a little bit to that answer as well. We have two outreach staffs that are working with people who live outside, and there are no authorized campsites anywhere. But there are some places that are better than others, and we don't, and we will tell people, you can try this out. This has worked out for others before, and, and, and there are those sites in both Montpelier and in Berlin. There's actually quite a few people camping in Berlin, and, and we try to have a very transparent communication with public safety officials in both of those communities. And we say, you know, we know that there are people camping here, and we just wanna let you know that, that way they're prepared if something happens. And I think that we really appreciate that they have taken a, you know, to the extent possible, a hands-off approach. And they're only getting involved if, if they need to. And so, but there really are no great places for people to be living outside. I think sanitation is the biggest issue of all. Um I think sanitation is the biggest issue of all. And um but um so that's the state of of uh of affairs.
Counsel.
Thank you.
Any motions or?
Get one more up.
Deputy Chief Joe Oldsworth.
I'd just like to have that during our weekly call.
We can hear you speak a little closer in the computer, maybe.
Can you hear me now?
About a little better.
Right. I'd just like to make clear in our.
Oh, now we can't hear you, Joe. Some some days are like that.
We understood that. He just wants to make it clear.
Yeah, Doc- Dr. Finner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to second and underscore uh the comments of the chair of our task force. Uh she's working on this all the time. Uh one thing that would have helped immediately, uh Rick just mentioned sanitation. There are places in Berry City where we could safely have porta pottings. And that would go a long way to dealing with the sanitation issue, and it's not a major investment. Uh now granted, you want them in safe places. You want them in places where uh uh you have to be aware, you know, we we know what all the concerns and potential problems are. But I think it would be an immediate help uh in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's I'm gonna I I wanna I we have other business tonight, so I really want to try to unless you have something really high value add.
Yeah, I I I have a just a quick question. Do we have the the churches involved, like any of the elders on your staffs and stuff?
Yeah, we do. They're they're at the table. All right, so we've gotten our update. If there are no motions, then uh we can close this item of business.
Next public briefing will be the council, we could do it Friday to Saturday. We meet on Tuesday. Zoom like we intended to do for this one. I mean, we we meet. How about how about this? If you have anything to tell us, um if we're not going to take any action, we let us know.
Yeah.
If you have anything to tell us.
Yep, absolutely. All right, that takes us to volunteer appointments. Thanks for everybody for being so patient um as we address the uh the unknowns here. We have uh several appointments.
Yeah.
I don't I don't have the list. So yeah, we're starting with the Buildings and Facilities Committee. We have four seats uh with two-year terms. Oh, thank, thank, oh, yeah, thanks. Yeah, all right, okay. This is this is my agenda, yeah, so. All right, Buildings and Facilities Committee, we have four seats uh with two-year terms and one seat with one-year unfinished term. And uh we have three applicants before us tonight and a fourth that's scheduled for a later meeting, no contested seats, and the order that we have these listed in the packet are Sue Higbee, uh Richard Denti, uh John Velson Giacomo, and so we'll start with you, Sue. Thanks for your patience, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Noting that um that the the this is not a competitive process. There are four seats, there are four candidates. Uh the candidates that we have listed, Ms. Higbee, Mr. Denti, and Mr. Velson Giacomo, uh they are incumbents. They uh I'm very familiar with all three and with their good work on the committee. Certainly have no objection to them introducing themselves into taking questions, but I would make the motion that we appoint Sue Higbee, Richard Denti, and John Velson Giacomo uh each to uh two-year terms on the Buildings and Facilities Committee.
Second.
Motion in a second. All right, Sue.
Came all the way here, Ms. Higbee, whatever you'd like to do.
I wouldn't have combed my hair.
A song and dance.
I've been in the garden for six days. Okay, here I am.
Well, it's all it's also always a good opportunity just to uh communicate with council about what's happening and all the good things.
Yes, and I I appreciate, thank you, for reinstating my activities. Thank you. Um one of the things that makes me very eager to step up again and serve is that I was uh the person who basically brokered a huge partnership between Norwich University and Berry City that offered us a huge amount of talent from the construction and engineering team at Norwich University, their professors, and also the architecture and art department. And the team has worked over a period of a year assembling data, assembling assessments, and assembling recommendations on how the facility can be improved. So I'm very excited to be a part of that. Also, on a more personal note, I'm very excited that I think that I'm an example of the first wave of Title IX girls athletes uh that have managed to push through it all. Um I was in the seventh grade when Title IX passed, and we rejoiced. And I think that um of course, we're still a distance away from equality. It took my high school at least ten years to get to the point where it bought decent balls and uniforms for the girls teams. Equality is not something that comes overnight. And I still see a lot of holes, but a lot of opportunities. I think it's very important for children to have a chance to not only play in athletic activities, such as those that are organized up at the auditorium, but also in music, theater, and other group activities that allow for team spirit and activities to flourish. So one of the things that tracks me to all of the buildings up on the hill is that they provide opportunities for all ages. And at a time when we need to work together as a community, I think that those buildings will do a lot for us. So I'm looking forward to another two years. Any questions?
All right, hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Takes us to Mr. Denti.
Rick Denti, I've been on that committee for thirty-two years. And I would like to stay two more years, and then maybe I'll retire from that committee. There's a lot of things that uh are coming to a head uh from all the years that I've been on there that with the uh the Norwich study and that work coming to a completion, the recommendations that they made, the potential of the Sanders money coming uh for the auditorium. I just think it's it's there's a lot of pluses that are gonna uh keep that antique relic uh in modern-day times um and up to date. And I just would like to be involved, as I have been, to do that.
Thank you much.
Any questions?
Like your support, any questions from anybody?
Anything in particular you'd like to see at the B O R to help uh upgrade or renovate?
Uh, no, I just think the more use, I I think uh we can come up with a a uh formula for year-round use of the the B O R. It would uh it would definitely help stability of the property and the building and the finances and uh also the community, you know, uh would get more involved. Thank you.
Remind me, what's the match for the uh Senator Sanders earmark?
Just under three million.
Under three million, got it. Council goes on?
What is the record? So you're thirty-two years. You'll you'll be thirty-four into it at the end of this next year, next term. Wh- what is the record?
I don't know.
Probably thirty-two.
No idea.
Okay.
But it's gotta be right up there.
Fun fact, he can find out for the next meeting if you don't mind.
It's a long, it's a long time.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rick.
And John Velson Giacomo. Thanks for making time tonight.
Thanks for having me. Uh I'm John Velson Giacomo. I've been on the committee I want to say eighteen years. Um and first, before I get too much, the Norris project was pretty amazing, and Art Dezro, Jeff Burdron did a great job, and Sue was amazing. Sue really um and those are not the many people can make it to the last presentation, but that was one of the coolest things I've been part of and sat through, and so I can't thank Sue enough because it's done. That was a wonderful, and the timing of that couldn't have been any better, Sanders funding. But uh I think many of us are here uh seeking to be reappointed because we're we're excited. And it's my wife looks at me like when I saw the news article with the funding, how actually excited it was, is because we've put a lot of time in and always told, no, there's no money. Our committee's always been tasked with figuring out how to pay for it, and we have an attachment to that building, and uh it's just, I'm excited. I like I like to stay on the committee to see it through, to see what can happen. We've every, we've been here before. Every year we sit there, we go through, we've been going through the punch list for that facility every year since I've been on that committee, and everyone's why we see things done, like just the hockey boards. That was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I'm going off memory here. It could be off a couple thousand, but you know, we that's how we started doing selling advertising. City came, those boards were the original boards. They were unsafe. Figure out how to do it. So we started selling advertising. Um it's uh yeah, it's just, there's a lot to do up there. That building's pretty amazing. Uh if you've if you've ever taken a a real tour of that building, get down to the bowels of it. Um it it's uh, yeah, there's a lot of work to be done, but the Norris students were talking about the auditorium, you know, just the how good that building still is, is, you know, it'll be a hundred years old, and it's about ninety-something years old right now. It's it's just amazing. So I'm looking forward, hopefully, to um stay on the committee to see this through. We uh this is a committee that we've never had issues with quorum. I think everybody on the committee has been chair at one point. I can't remember when I was chair. We've all taken our turns, and I'm not sure Rick or Art Dezro both been on there. I'm not sure how many years Art's been on, but he's gotta be yeah, he's been on there quite, he's supposed to be pushing maybe thirty-two as well. Uh so yeah, so happy answering questions, but I'm I'm excited for the progress that's going on.
Any questions? Any early discussions about how to fundraise three million dollars?
There's been talking about uh matching. There's there's there's, you know, it's what I'm understanding, and I point to Sue, because Sue, again, is um it's great. She brings to the table a different background than, you know, than I have, because she knows the nonprofit. She knows she has these contacts, and I think through it's not actually have to get money in hand, all money in hand, I think, and be matching for programs, but um me personally, I lean on, you know, the auditorium is known for as Jim Williams says, the cathedral of Vermont basketball, right? Um there's a lot of history, a lot of people around Vermont, a lot of people who very attached to that building come March, and a lot of history, a lot of good memories. I think that's a great resource if we can lean into that. Um tap into that, because one of the things we're looking to do is make that a, you know, update it for basketball. We only have two locker rooms. We've been there. One's huge locker room, one small. You've got to have uh referee locker rooms. We've got to have the, you know, it's not just males refereeing male basketball. You know, you're gonna have multi-sex changing, you know, so it's for the referees, because there can be male and female referees, you know, doing either a men's game or a girls' women's game. So I think that's a great way, but we've been, our committee started talking about it, but there's.
And what and what's the deadline that uh the city wants to come up with that?
We don't have a deadline yet. I don't think when we get the money.
Yeah, I think we've we've been talking to USDA and um they they want to start seeing like a cohesive plan uh end of September. But that's that's a plan, and we can, we have, we've talked about avenues. There's um lower zero-interest loans from USDA that can be the, that can be the match. Um so that would be sort of a fallback option, and then the nice thing about that is that if we then get a grant or if we come up with other funding that the the non-in- the the low-interest loan will be sort of packed away. They they don't lock you into that amount, so that's kind of the fallback um that that we've been talking about sort of at the staff level.
Okay, good. So you have something to add?
I was just gonna say, this is a topic that deserves to have a discussion.
Yeah.
Very focused and not
As an appointment thing, yeah.
Not have a statement here, there's the, you know, immediate need, of course, to get the match in place so we qualify for the funding presented in the same office. But there are other needs too, and, you know, a year ago, I took a a suggestion to the committee about having an individual donation program. And that is something we haven't had a piece of research for, but that could generate a portion of general ops on an annual basis, and also a portion, and this isn't the future. I mean, if you look at the big picture, we need to be in a position to celebrate the hundredth birthday of the law. And this is just the first step. And so what I would just say is, if we're tossing the thought with them, we're ready to do the work, we're ready to inspire other people to do it. But it's a larger discussion, and I think we should.
Absolutely, and and we definitely, one thing we've recognized as a council is that we need to improve the communication that flows back and forth. Um and we're moving toward a a council liaison thing, probably some routine, more routine updates. And and of course, we all value when the chairs are able to submit a report and the annual report. And I have to say, on the Sanders earmark, you know, I was a member of council, voted against that, and uh and asked if there was a match at the time and was told that there wasn't um when it was brought by B A D C, but I've really been recruited uh by mostly by Sue. Uh and and so excited about this project and the work that the Norwich students are doing. And it's a, it's gonna be a big lift, but it's such a, it's gonna be an exciting project over the next couple of years. And and the reason why I was hesitant is because I know the public horse garage needs so much work, but as Teddy says, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. So so thank you.
Yes.
Yes, and, all right, all right. Any other questions for John?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Right. So that takes us through Buildings and Facilities. We have a motion in a second. Uh is there any discussion on the three names? Guaranteeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, unanimous, are reappointed. That takes us to the Transportation and Public Works Committee. We have four open seat, two-year terms. Uh one applicant tonight, two additional candidates uh will be coming back to us um at a later meeting. Art Bombardier.
Noting the same circumstances, I'd make the same motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second, stop.
There's a motion in a second.
Arthur Bombardier, or Bombadear, all names. What can I say? I put everything on my application, I thought. Let's see, I graduated from V T C and went to uh, I went downstate to Connecticut, so they offered more money uh for a year and a half. My dad got sick in St. Olins, so I moved back home. Uh I worked for the Agency of Transportation uh in design for uh, well, uh in construction, fifteen years in construction, then thirty-two years in design. Uh at that time, I was also a project supervisor, which uh we did uh did the project, uh the big dig uh in Berry here. Uh I was uh I was the project supervisor. And uh from there, uh after after I retired after forty-seven years, I uh worked eight more years for the state for two days a week. Now, God, how many numbers is that? How old am I? I'm eighty. I turned eighty last week, uh two weeks ago, sorry. But uh besides that, I like being on the committee because I think I have something to give to them, is knowledge and uh a lot of perspective of how the state works on money and other things, construction. I ju- I just feel that I uh I'm kind of keep everybody in balance. That's that's about all I have.
Any questions?
Questions?
Are you gonna try to break the thirty-two-year record?
Yeah, probably not. Not, no, I, no, I don't think, I don't think so. And because Rick's only a few more years ahead of me.
What what do you think are some of the 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 bigger transportation issues uh facing the city, particularly, you know, how we can make wa- biking and walking uh more uh and and calm the traffic in the city, given the B-Trans standards so often get in the way?
There's a lot of, a lot of ways to think about this. Like I said, I think it was at the last meeting. If you pave the road, you're gonna have speeders. If you leave the potholes, that's the traffic calmer. And people, I mean, that's just the way to think about it sometimes, and of course, it is awful rough on the South Main Street. Like Cumberland Farm Farm's there, it's getting pretty bad, but uh I uh for bikes, um I don't know how you're gonna do that. It it's difficult because uh you need the width for clearance. Uh even if you have bikes, bikes, they can veer into your pathway without your fault. I mean, there's many ways of looking at this, but I I don't have one. I mean, there's many ways of looking at this, but I, I don't have one, uh, I'm open to bikes. The state built a lot of bikes, bike paths and, uh, rails and everything else. But I reviewed, uh, my last eight years I was at the state. That's all I did was review plans. Pick, pick things apart to make sure everything was included in the plans and besides that, um, no, I, I, I guess I'm, I think the, some of the whiffs we got on the lanes are we need, but others, I understand it doesn't encourage speeders. But you can say that in the city, but like on Route seventy-eight in Swan, straight roads, very narrow, but they still speed because it's a wide open. It's, it's hard to change people's habits. Myself, twenty-five most of the time in the city.
Any other questions? Oh, Sam, you have your hand raised? Oh, nope. All right. All right. There's a motion and a, motion in a second. Um, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, who's opposed? Guys have it. Thank you.
Oh, I thought she had her hand up. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So that takes us to Susan on the cow pasture committee. We have one. Yep, thank you. Bombadear, Bombardier.
No, he ruined it for everybody because it was always, uh, no, it was always, you always pronounced it differently. You always pronounce, and then when Tim got here, he pronounces his name Bombadear. You are always Bombardier.
So Tim next.
Well, no, so it's like, but they were spelled exactly the same, so.
If you go into St. Olins, it's Bombargy. A G on the end, it's D I E R. Got kind of slack and just said, Bombargy.
Just call him tomato and be done with it. Thank you, Art.
All right. So thank you for your patience, Susan. Um, so we have the cow pasture stewardship committee, one seat, one year term and one seat, one year unfinished term. Which term is Susan?
It'd be up to council, the, the, um, one other candidate has been appointed to the other full year term.
So it's the unfinished year term. Okay, great.
How many, and sorry, same question. How many seats?
Sorry.
There are two.
There's two, sorry.
There's a one-year term and then a one-year unfinished term.
One seat, two-year term, one seat, one-year unfinished term. Sorry, there's one.
Oh, two-year. Okay, that's a typo.
Yeah, sorry about that. The matrix is correct.
Two-year term.
Okay.
Yeah, the matrix that you got is correct.
I thought it was two-year.
Yeah, it's two-year term. So there's one.
Thank you.
There's, there is one seat with a one-year unfinished term, but we don't have another applicant.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint. Um, didn't we already do that? No, we haven't yet. Um, sorry, we're, we're, we're losing, we're getting off our game tonight, but Susan, welcome so much. Yeah, if it's your opportunity to introduce yourself and explain why you're interested in the committee.
Hey, um, I'm Susan McDowell. I live on Spalding Street. Um, I spend a great deal of time in the pasture and especially in the time of, uh, COVID. I spent tons of time there and was really, uh, that was a time in my life when I became, I think, more connected to the outdoors and all that it gives to us, that, uh, peace and, um, calming. Yeah, um, so I like to play outside, but I've become more and more aware of this connection. So I think the pasture's a beautiful space. I've been to a few of the, uh, committee meetings and read their stewardship plan, which I find impressive, uh, and they seem very focused on that. I would be happy to be a part of that work and give back to this space it gives to us, that cleans our air, cleans our water and offers us a place for recreation.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, it's definitely a special place in the city and we recently had an update, um, from Jeanette, who is, uh, the other recent, um, person who is, we could act on tonight.
She's been appointed.
Oh, she, we did act on that. Okay, yeah. So, um, who gave us an update about their Ursa grant, which is the grant for some wayfinding and parking. So they, they have some cool projects in the mix, so. If there are no further questions, uh, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Motion curious. Thank you. And, and just to clarify for the record, so Jeanette had a, uh, one seat, two-year term. And Susan will have a one-seat, one-year unfinished term?
No, no, so the, no, Susan, so the matrix is correct. So there's two seats for two-year terms.
Okay, I got it.
That was reappointed to one. Susan's just been appointed to the other. There'll be a one-seat, one-year unfinished term that's vacant.
Vacant, got it. All right.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you. Two years. Thanks for coming in. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the homelessness task force. We have three seats with two-year terms. Um, and we have two applicants before tonight. I assume those, those applicants are applying for those seats?
They could be, they, they didn't apply for a specific seat. Um, there's two additional members who applied, so there will, there are four seats for four members who applied. One of them is a one-year term. I will let council know that one of the candidates who's not here tonight is an incumbent. So if council prefers to reappoint that person, that's Chip Castle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so as you're thinking about your appointments, um, Chip's, Chip's an incumbent who's, who will be up, I believe, on the sixth. Um, so, but in, in reality, there's, there's four seats for the four people who have applied.
Well, since, uh, since we're doing, we're doing two at a time.
It, it's up to you. Yeah, there's, there's only, there's two members who were able to interview tonight and two of them weren't able to do it tonight, so.
So we're taking up these two.
Yeah, you could take up these two. You could appoint them to a two-year term. You could appointment, appoint one of them to a one-year term. Your call. Is that, did I confuse it enough?
All right.
You did. It's just weird.
Well, why don't we just say though, since they're, at first they get the two-year terms and then, all right.
But who, who scheduled them?
So I reached out to all members of the homelessness task force and I said, if you're able to attend, I tried to get sort of the, the committees that were smaller in number. Um, they weren't able to. Uh, the two of them weren't able to, but we figured it was still worth getting some, some of the interviews out of the way.
Okay, so we don't have to appoint this evening. We could, we could interview and we could hold the appointments.
Yeah.
Until we've interviewed all four.
You certainly, all right, you can certainly do that. And then if you, if you choose, just I wanted to let you know that if you wanted to appoint the incumbent to a two-year term, you would have an opportunity to do that on the sixth as well.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, so we have Miriam van Dor.
Hi.
Hi, welcome. So this is a, an opportunity, if you just want to express why you're interested in, um, uh, serving on the, the, the committee.
Well, I work in the homeless committee. I have been homeless in the past, um, so I have an understanding of the issues facing that homeless people face and issues in the community. Just thought I would be a, a voice of reason.
Thank you. Any questions? Council during.
Do you live in Berry City?
I do.
Wonderful.
All right. If there are no questions, the next up, uh, thank you, Miriam. Um, we'll take the next up is Joseph Mueller. Welcome, Joe.
Joe, Joe Muller, uh, it's Beth Mueller. We spell our name the same, but I'm, I'm Muller, Joe Muller. And, um, the reason that I'm interested in joining the task force is, um, I, um, I've been volunteering a lot in the last four years or so. I'm seventy-three and this is what's become very important to me in my life is to help others. Um, it, it seems to have given me my reason to keep going. Um, so I have a master's degrees in psychology and, um, I was, I ha, I owned a business in central Vermont for many years. And I owned a grocery store in Granifield in the early eighties, which I understand is still going strong. Um, I have spent so much time these last few years helping from the bottom up. Like I volunteer to drive, um, for the VABVI and, you know, vision, people with vision problems. I, um, cook. Uh, I think the homeless shelter gets, um, my home fries every Monday, or somebody gets my home fries every Monday. I cook. I volunteer at the church, the Good Shepherd Church. And, um, I thought that it would be a good idea to learn how to help from the top down. And that would mean doing something like this. I'm, I'm listening. I'm learning and I'm forming opinions and, um, I think that, um, I think, uh, I could do a good job on the homelessness committee. And, um, I don't know what else to say. Um.
That's a great introduction and as you can tell, we're, uh, we're, we're definitely in the midst of, um, of a potential homelessness crisis, so.
Okay, well, I'll shut up then. I have COVID. I'm, I'm at home because I'm, I'm, it's my fourth day of COVID, but.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Well, that's fine. It's just, you know, it's not so bad. Okay, so what do I do next?
No, well, now we need to, um, have council make a motion to appoint, uh, the two applicants on the agenda tonight for, uh, two-year terms. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second and council during has further discussion.
Uh, I was just curious, uh, you said that you were listening, learning and, and forming of opinions. And I was just curious what, uh, they were.
Oh, it's, that's not time for that. Um, I have a Substack that's called, um, the, um, the Cranky Optimist's Cookbook. So if you're interested, you can see my opinions there. I can put you on my email list.
Well, I guess I was just more curious because you're asking for an appointment to a committee.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and I, I was just, you know, you mentioned in the interview process, so I just thought that it pertained to this particular appointment. So if it doesn't obtain to that appointment, then I apologize for my questioning.
I'm sorry, my brain is a little foggy. I'm just.
No worries.
An opinionated person and, and I wasn't talking about anything specific. I have no.
If you have lots of opinions, it may not be too long before you're on council.
Don't do it.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
What, what is the motion? The motion is for two-year terms? Both to two-year terms?
Yeah.
But we have, and we have an incumbent. I mean, that's why I'd actually prefer that the motion be withdrawn because we do have four seats. Um, I would be, you know, I, as, as I've mentioned before.
We have four open seats.
Huh?
We have four open seats.
Right, but we only have three two-year terms, but we only have one incumbent left?
There's one incumbent.
Okay, no, 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 then I, then I'm good. So we'll have a two-year term for the incumbent. So I'm, I'm fine with that. Okay.
So there's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Uh, just to give you a little update on the next round, we've invited, um, DRB Ward Three, which has two candidates for two terms. Um, invited the last buildings and facilities committee, um, candidate couldn't make it tonight. Um, the cemeteries, recreation, conservation committee, those are competitive. There's seven applicants for two open seats. Um, Chip Castle, uh, and the other homelessness task force candidate has been invited for the sixth as well. As has the PAC, which is returning all three incumbents and two other candidates who are applying for, um, the transportation public works. That's on tap for the sixth and the balance of the DRB planning commission, DNE, CV fiber and regional planning commission for the twentieth. They've, all those people have been emailed. Uh, we're confirming their availability for those dates.
And now for the most important item of business, the clerk treasurer annual, annual review, set compensation clerk treasurer does.
Y'all have the memo. I'm asking for four percent.
Uh, I would move to increase, uh, the clerk's salary by six percent. Noting that, um, you know, a number of years ago, uh, or more recently, when I became the senior partner at the firm and now I can do what I want, um, I started tying annual raises to inflation because even the, and because if you don't keep pace with inflation, you're asking your employees to go backwards. Now, on top of that, obviously people should be entitled to merit pay, but in my mind, the two are always very different. Inflation, it certainly isn't my fault as an employer. It's not the city of Berry's fault as an employer, but it certainly isn't the employee's fault either. So, uh, inflation last year was a whopping eight point two six percent. And the raise that we give the city clerk is really sort of retroactive. So in some respects, with apologies, Carol, I'm even being a little bit of a skinflint with, with six percent as opposed to eight point two six. But, uh, given the work that the clerk has done in the past year, certainly the work, um, the clerk did during COVID, I'm only disappointed that, uh, that we could not qualify her for some sort of merit pay, but I haven't entirely ruled that out either.
I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second to, uh, make the increase six percent. Council booting.
Yeah, well, I think that's just a friendly amendment, right?
What's that?
Well, I didn't, I didn't hear. I didn't take that. Down the first because it was a, a scream.
No, the, the six, uh, no, the, the clerk asked for, the clerk can't make a motion.
No, I know. I thought I, I thought I heard a motion in a second.
I started to make a motion. Michael thought it was a full.
Yeah, so I apologize. I, it, it's reminiscent of when we, when we had this conversation with Paul Poyer. It was in that same spot.
Uh, on, under discussion, I will vote for this, under condition that you don't spend the next five minutes trying to talk us out of it.
I won't.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Now, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 And, uh, and, and a word of thanks.
Thank you all.
What a year, what a few years. All right, so that takes us to, uh, upcoming business. So Nicholas, you previewed a few things for us, um, coming up.
Yeah, so we have the CIP, the capital improvement plan update. Um, the interviews that I mentioned, uh, we've reached out to, um, those committees. Uh, we'll have to, um, finalize action on appointments to the TIF downtown action team. Uh, and we are finalizing stormwater and excavation permit fees. So we expect to have that on Tuesday.
Great. And we're getting briefed on, on litigation?
Yeah, I, I'll probably be sending council an email on that.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
All right. Any other upcoming business anyone wants to preview?
Counselor Stockwell.
Counselor Stockwell.
I would like us to discuss saving some of the ARPA money for revolving housing fund. I'd like to put that on as a topic of conversation.
Revolving housing funds. All right. That takes us to roundtable and, um, maybe as a point of privilege, uh, we could, uh, do around a happy birthday for the, the man, the guy whose birthday it is today. And, uh,
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Tom. Happy birthday to you.
And with that, the top.
Takes a lot to make me bread and usually i, as much as people might not believe it, when attention is totally focused on me, I don't particularly care for it. Uh, just hey, you know what? Best birthday present ever. We actually had a meeting over on Prospect Street with all of the consultants, all of the engineers, all of the players. And, uh, finally have all of the permits from all of the jurisdictions. Uh, so we're going to be starting that cleanup on, uh, Monday. It is going to be a lengthy process. It's going to be two. going to be two or three weeks, a lot of traffic, uh, not a lot of dust and not a lot of debris, but a lot of traffic. So I'll apologize in advance and I'll apologize even more that it's taken this long, but it wasn't for lack of trying. And with that, I'm all set.
All right, well, happy birthday. Counselor Wazak.
Pass.
Counselor Stockwell.
Pass.
Counselor Booton.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed. I didn't know that it was your birthday because I would have done what I did the last time it was your birthday on a Tuesday night, which was make you a balloon hat. And I know, I'm sure.
It's all good, Michael.
But in the spirit, just know that that's what I would have done.
It's not too late to run one.
It's fine. Thank you. It's the thought that counts.
Counselor Shumville.
I'll pass.
Counselor Derry.
So I'll just uh really start off with the thanks for the, the Berry Area Veterans Council for the entire parade that was put on today and the memorial. Uh, for those of their military who have fallen, um, you know, it really is an honor and a privilege, um, Jake, like you said today, um, to have the liberties and the freedoms that we have. Um, and without those individuals and their lives being sacrificed for the ultimate, we wouldn't be able to sit here today. And, and it really uh constantly comes to mind when we do have events like that about the honor and the privilege that we have as elected officials to serve our communities. Um, and really just be uh part of that representative democracy. So with that, I'll pass.
And I'll, I'll pass too. So that's a wrap.
Adjourn.
Unless there's an executive session.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second to adjourn and it is seven fifteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Good meeting.
Good night, Sam.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
We may have to consider the normal sixty.